Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of Suyes Town Council, Monday, August the 20th, 2018, 9:00 AM in council chambers. And is there an introduction of late items? No, nothing more. So can I have a motion, please, that the agenda be adopted? Thank you, Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor? Thank you. And first up today, we have a delegation, a delegation of one, I think, is it? And that would be from the Suyes Baptist Church and Pastor Phil. Thank you for coming, Pastor Phil. I assume you're going to give us a little history of what happened this summer and how you managed, because we're quite interested and we...
Well, it was a very interesting and a very enjoyable summer in many ways, getting to meet so many people from so many different places. And we want to thank you for your support in this adventure of helping our local farmers. And while as a church, this is not our direct problem, we certainly want to help because we see it as a huge need in our community. We're sorry that we weren't better prepared for everything that we wanted to do, and as a result, there was some inconvenience for our neighbors, and we recognize that. We're going to continue to develop our back property into a black playfield with fences and grass, and we'll make it a much cleaner, neater place. It was fantastic to meet all these people, just by the numbers. We had people from 43 different countries come through. It's just, it always just blows me away to see how so many people come to a soyuz to pick cherries from all over the world. And it was, it's quite, makes for a very interesting conversations. We estimate that we hosted about 300 different campers over the time, and probably about 200 was our maximum that we had there at one point. We served, on our Saturday night meals, we served 3,284 meals, with our highest being 882 on one night, and another was 854.
Wow.
We gave over 3,000 showers, and at our peak, we had two porta-potties that were emptied every day. We only had two because that's all we could get. If we could have had a third or a fourth, we would have, but we had two, and they were emptied every day, as needed to be. Our garbage bin was emptied twice a week, overflowing garbage bin twice a week. And I guess my comment would be, given two porta-potties emptied every day, a garbage bin emptied twice a week, if they hadn't been at the church, where would that, where would all of that have been? And so we see it as a huge need. I think, for myself, I heard fewer complaints about the beach. I think because the kids had a place to be, they didn't hang out at the beach as much. There were still some down there, and I think a lot of them came down to Legion Beach and hung out there because it was closer than the other one. I think that they were, the thing that we heard most from them was just, was their gratitude for a place to stay. And I think something like this doesn't need to be fancy, and compassion towards them doesn't have to be expensive, but it just needs to be genuine. And simply showing that we care made a huge difference for them. But I guess the question we sort of, if you, if you want some other numbers in terms of finance, we calculated that our camping, because we hired one of them to help us kind of monitor things at night for a month, and we estimate that our camping with the garbage and the power and that type of thing cost us about $4,600. The showers were about $1,200, and the meals were just under $13,000. If you're not aware of how Baptist churches work, we're totally autonomous, and so all the money that was, is raised locally. The church from Abbotsford that has helped us with this in the past was really the only other church that helped make a contribution towards that. And so we see it as a great need, and we're glad that we were able to participate in that. Apart from Mountain Park, the church, I mean, the community, town council, and the fruit growers, there was about $9,000 that came in from outside. Where do we go from here? I guess one of the reasons why, I spoke, I spoke to Rotary a couple weeks ago, and Jim suggested that I need to come and talk to council, because this is something that the town and the RDOS really need to address. And I guess I was thinking with this, when I heard that the Union of Municipal Conference was coming up.
UBCM.
That that could be an opportunity to maybe talk to some of these powers that be about what needs to happen. You know, we're glad to use our property in that way, but whether it's ours or someplace else, there needs to be a place where these kids can land and then move on to the farms. And that's what we generally saw, that there were, in some situations, when they were at our place, and the farmer would come and take them to their farm, and they were just ecstatic at what the farmer was providing in terms of facilities, and they were super excited to go and stay there. And we had other farms where the kids went and stayed, and they came back the next day because they said, "It's just disgustingly filthy." There were also some comments of farmers making inappropriate comments towards some of the young ladies. And so I think some of our farmers need to do better. But I think our farmers need to recognize, our orchardists, that this is their responsibility, too, that if they're, that they're the ones who need them, and they need to provide that place, and they need to provide a place that's adequate for them. Again, it doesn't have to be super elaborate, and for most of them, this is a period of four to six weeks. Just as an observation, I noticed that there seems to be some very late varieties that local farmers are growing. And essentially, as everybody was clearing out, and majority, 90% of them were gone, we had a farmer show up and say, "Where'd everybody go?" "Mine's ready for tomorrow." And I've seen that over the last couple of years. But they're all moving on, trying to catch the next crop, and they're not aware. So somehow, that needs to be communicated to them, too, that there is a later variety for some who can take advantage of that, I don't know how much there is. But whether the agricultural land commission needs to be approached about this problem, I don't know who else but RDOS, this is also, they need to be involved in this somehow. What can the provincial government do to help? What concessions can the ALC make to accommodate this six-week landing pad? Soyuz is different. It's not the same as all the rest of the communities, because this is where they all come first. They all want to get into the first tree, they all want to get into the first crop, and that's here. And so they all come here, and then they start to go back and spread out Creston, Caramas, and the other places after the fact. So I think they need to recognize that it is different. So what's going to happen next year? I don't know. We had a visit from the Mexican consulate at one point, and they were asking, which to me at the time seemed like some strange questions, they were asking whether or not we considered our church a place of refuge. They were asking whether or not we considered our property a place of refuge. Then a couple weeks later, we heard that there was a, that Canadian immigration had done kind of a sweep-through orchards, and that there were a number of Mexicans that were picked up and deported, and that this was from information that had come from the Mexican consulate, which to me didn't make sense, because Mexico views these foreign workers as a, as a main sustainer of their economy. And so why would they want to see their own kids picked up and deported and then banned from being able to come back for another five years? It didn't make sense to me. But I know the kids are pretty jumpy about talking to anybody right now who's fluent in Spanish. So the other issue that we need to, that needs to be addressed is, are the hotel motel restaurants needing to find place for housing workers? The pickers are here for four to six weeks, and the camping will do, but the accommodation for the hotel motel workers, that's four to six months. And we still have kids staying at the church because of that, that there is, that they're not doing the job. You know, a shame to see a place like Boston Pizza not able to be open at lunchtime because they can't get workers. And, you know, I mean, that's a huge need, and I think that's going to be a growing need. There's more of them, and I think there's more need for greater work. And even the Canadian workers need accommodation, because we just don't have them here. Everybody's short this year, so. Are there any questions that I can...
Yeah, I just want to say, and I'm sure there are questions, thank you very much for the attention that you have paid to dealing with this, which has been a problem for many, many, many years. How much do the, I think the orchardists tend to maybe have enough on their plate, and they don't want to deal with this, but I know that there are several that were, have been at orchards, and they, and they have accommodated people, so that's a good thing. Maybe what you guys did this summer was to bring this to light, and people will realize how many are here. If they weren't behind the Baptist church, they could have been up out of sight along the canal or other places. So we certainly appreciate the fact, we know that you've run into problems, we've certainly heard about them here, too. And we, and it's, it's something that we all need to deal with, but, you know, over the years, many different supposed solutions have been tried, and they haven't worked out as well as, as we expected. I'm wondering if BC Fruit Growers Association may need to be involved in this as well. And I just want to thank you and your congregation for all of the time and the effort that you have spent in doing this. And obviously, it's come to light, and we need to work on, on solutions. Before I let council talk, I see that you have some tents there right now. It was cleared out for a while, there's a few there now that are back?
They're, they're, they're coming back, I think now, and this is what often happens now, they're coming back to try to find grapes and apples.
Okay, peaches? I don't know whether that's...
Peaches are done.
Oh, are they?
Pretty much.
All right. Okay, so I'll let council, yeah, we'll let everybody have a turn. Go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Cordoff. And I just want to say, first off, Pastor Phil, that, well, I have a couple of questions and comments, but I don't in any way question your intention and what you're trying to do here. It's a challenging situation, you, you made a few points that soyuz is unique with this issue. And yes, it's affecting almost all the industries, especially the fact that we're seasonal, making it even more challenging. I wanted to ask, you talked about the funding you received to be able to do that this year. Did the industry itself, the agricultural industry, whether it be the growers association or the orchardists themselves, did they contribute at all financially to what you did this summer?
I think there was some money that was supposed to be coming from the BC Fruit Growers that had been on the books for some years, I don't know.
Oh.
That came, I think apart from, and it's been sitting here for some time, and council, town didn't know what to do with it, and so they shipped it our way. But apart from that...
Mr. Remanca, would you, sorry, can I just ask, Barry, too, could you mention, talk about that event, please?
Yes, that, the BC Fruit Grower funds were sitting in our account, I think, for probably about six or seven years, because at one time, there was a project underway, you know, looking at developing a site, and it never got, never got completed. So the monies were sitting in our account, and we had brought it to council to, and asked if council would allocate those funds to this project, and you did. So I don't recall the number off, it was close to $1,000, $1,200, something like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I guess that, that's my concern, is we need solutions to this, and the industry's being affected, the guest experience we're able to provide in this town is becoming an issue, as you mentioned, with restaurants not being able to open. But I wonder why industry hasn't, hasn't put skin in the game to help solve this? And it's always a fine balance between social safety nets and capitalism, and where local government and churches can play a role. And, and I think there's a role to play from, from all the parties involved. Where I get frustrated, I think, is when the industry that's, that needs this labor and is benefiting from this labor isn't stepping up in a meaningful way to find solutions to this problem, whether it be through helping finance projects through a church, or looking for solutions on their own. I understand the challenges and the profit margins in the seasonal industry, but I think there needs to be that balance. And when we look at one of the recent semi-solutions for the hotel industry, it was the industry itself that made the initial investment and took that initiative. And it's hard for me to, to get behind putting significant money toward this, of taxpayer money, through this municipality, when I don't see the industry stepping forward to do their part.
I agree with you. I think that's where the farmers need to, the farmers need to see the need to provide for their workers while they're working for them specifically. And I think this year, we have, we have, I have not heard of any farmers that weren't doing that. In the past, that was the case. They didn't want far, pickers staying on their property, but they wanted them there for four o'clock.
Well, I think that's my concern, is what you're doing almost seems like it's a bailout to the industry, and maybe they're going to stop any efforts they're doing because they think it's being resolved through the church.
And that's, that's, that's a possibility. But how many years has this been going on? And, you know, like, we've, we've been involved in purposeful camping for one year, accidental camping for one, for one year, for, you know? So this certainly isn't our intention. It's just, there needs to be a place where they can go to find a farm to work at. It's like there needs to be that initial landing pad, as I say.
Yeah.
So that they can go from there, because a lot of these kids are here first time.
Yeah.
They're coming from Europe, they're coming from Asia, and they don't know anything about this place. They don't know who, they don't have contacts. That's how we ended up camping last year, was because these people showed up, and because the two previous years, the crop was harvested in on the May long weekend. And so they showed up for that. And then when we tell them, "No, no, no, it's going to be normal this year."
Yeah.
"We can't afford $40 a night at a campground."
Yeah. So I know they were very appreciative, because they certainly, every person that went through the line thanked us, so. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Cordoff. I'll try not to echo some of the other comments, but Pastor Phil, I'd like you to know that I'm very appreciative of what you did this year. As we're all aware, it came with some controversy and some less than favorable situations, and you seemed quite well at working through all of those. And at the end of the day, now that the season is winding down, people are feeling and have a different opinion about what you did and what happened up there. Every year that I've been on council, we have tried different plans and different ways of dealing with this situation within our municipality. For several years, we've boosted our police budget up and tried to have a stronger presence, and to a certain point, it worked pretty good. My problem always is, is that enforcement is always reactionary, you're always reacting to something negative that's happened. And I'd like to ask you for your opinion on, on how can this council, or future councils, be more proactive with what we're doing? There's been a high level of frustration on the things that we have done. You know, we tried to get that worker camp going just north of town and that kind of thing, and every time you start engaging with other levels of government and provincial departments and that kind of thing, everything seems to get so intense and so complicated that you can't even see how you can get past the next day, you know? Is there something that we can do to be more proactive?
I guess, you know, I think you're right in terms of these issues of approaching the BC Fruit Growers and encouraging them to be, encouraging the orchardists to be, to be stepping it up. And if they're able to, you know, be accommodating a little bit more in between, and I realize that costs farmers, and, but, you know, it's going to cost somebody. And, you know, I, I appreciate the support that town has given us in dealing with these, these difficult things. You know, the last thing we want is to cause grief with our neighbors where they're coming and knocking on your door, and we don't want to do that. And we want to be a good neighbor, too, but there's this, there's this huge need in our community. And, you know, if it can be contained, and I think that that's part of what we did, is that we contained it and gave them a positive place to come to. We enjoy doing this. It is a lot of work. I had, I'm actually taking three months of sabbatical this year, and one month, three times. And my one month was the month of July, where all I did was work with pickers. And, and I did that purposefully, and I enjoyed it. What that meant was I hung around town, but I didn't have to preach on Sundays. And so I had, I had lots of, lots of work to do, and early mornings and late nights. You know, I really don't see any other ways. If you, if it's not managed, then the kids are loose, and these are young adults. And, you know, we had enough, we had enough issues, and, I mean, we had a no alcohol rule. I knew everybody was drinking beer. But what I said was, "If I see it, I'm going to store it for you, and when you leave, you can come and pick it up." And so, you know, what that did is it meant they stayed in their tents and had a beer. It wasn't open.
Yeah.
And the result was...
Quieter.
It was quieter. You know, there wasn't, where people sit around and drink beer and get drunk together and make lots of noise. And...
No, we certainly appreciate that you thought of all the angles. I'm going to let Counselor Youngberg, Counselor King, ask questions if they, because we have other things on the agenda, but it's quite interesting, I'm sure we could talk about this for hours. Counselor Youngberg.
Great, thank you, Pastor Phil. I really enjoyed working with the group, serving the pickers, and I just have, just been so frustrated with the situation, because there's three or four of us in the community that have met and wondered, you know, how we're going to solve this problem, because we as a, as a congregation and church are not going to be able to continue to do this, workload is so heavy, and as it gets known throughout the country, it'll just get bigger and bigger. So we were trying to come up with some ideas of how, excuse me, this could be handled in the community. We thought of desert park, and of course, worked quite a lot at trying to figure out if we can use, you know, barn areas and recreate the stalls and things like that, that might help. But, you know, you have to really get down to the basics, and it's the administration and the organization that is so extremely important, and you have the manpower of which many organizations in town do not have. And if it comes back to the area of council or the RDOS, they cannot provide that type of administration and manpower. So it all comes down to the point of where, what do we do next as far as creating the, either the funds to support something, or creating a group, or an organization, or a facility that actually employs people to do these types of things that you were subjected to this last summer? So I don't know, it's just, just wanted you to know that, that, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we have been working, a few of us on the outside, trying to, you know, come up to us with a solution. And, you know, at one point, we were going to, I think, the past councils were going to organize Strawberry Creek or some areas like that, and just get some security and administration up there, but it just did not work. So as you say, it has to be monitored under a strong administration in order to keep the lid on what's, what can happen. So I don't know, what's your, what's your thoughts?
I think in being a church, we bring a bit of a moral pressure as well.
That's right.
Just being at the church, for a lot of them, it brings sort of a moral pressure that sort of keeps them somewhat under wraps as well. I think the other advantages of this type of a thing where it's organized like this, farmers knew where they could come and get workers, and that was happening. You know, kids, if they didn't have a place to go, they'd get up, they'd get dressed, they'd sit with their bucket, and the farmer would cruise through it at 6:00 in the morning and say, "I need six." Pick them up, and away they go, you know?
Yeah.
So that worked. And so this landing pad works for both the farmers and, and everybody. I think part, maybe, as I, as I think about it, is somehow to have a designation that we make sure that this is legal, and that it's, that there is a zoning or a, you know, to create, to protect you and protect us if we do this again.
Good point, yeah.
You know, that it, that it's sanctioned by the, by the government. And maybe when you go to the province, you need to say, "We need this, we need to be able to do this, and we need to protect ourselves, we need to protect the people who are going to do this." Whether it's at our place and make it portable. It can be a temporary zoning where we can say, "We're going to make this a camp for migrant workers," because they come, they're here. Like it or not, want it or not, they're coming, and they're going to be here again next year. Whether they come from Mexico, or whether they come from all over the world, they're coming.
So you're speaking to the right people, because our CAO and our planning director are both here, and I know that, that that type of thing will be possibly looked at to see if we can help you and come up with a solution. I'm going to let Counselor King ask a question, if he, or make a comment.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I'll just make it kind of short and sweet. First of all, thank you for being here. I think it's great to hear the update. I had the pleasure of being there one night, and all the kids thanked, every single one thanked us as they went through the food line. A central location is definitely needed. I hear some of the kids now are actually working in some of the restaurants, so they prefer not to be in the orchards. You mentioned central location for farmers to come pick them up, and that again becomes the missing piece from the farmers. Now, whether the RDOS, the provincial government can get involved, maybe we will have an opportunity to talk to some of those groups at the UBCM, and I'll just leave it at that. Thanks again.
So thank you very much for coming. You bring up all kinds of issues, and certainly, we needed an update on this, and we just want to thank you and the church for all of you do, all that you do for, to help this. Maybe you've made it too easy for the, for the orchardists and the farmers, let's hope not.
One last question.
Yes.
If you, in fact, were to accumulate funding, do a great budget, and the funds were available, would you, as a church, continue to operate it if funds were increased?
I think we, we could. I mean, as a church, we look at all these things on a year-to-year basis. You know, we always say, "Is this what God would have us do?"
Right.
And, and we move forward on, on that. You know, I think the church is, is positive. We've had a few people leave over it, because they think that they're all rich and that they don't need to be here. And we just say, "Well, that's not the case."
Yeah.
You know, I, we would, we would certainly look at it.
Look at it, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're very open to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you again for all your support.
I just want to add to contract DC Wine Institute as well as the BC Fruit Growers.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's a good point, because... That's a good point, because the wineries, I think, are one step behind the orchardists in allowing pickers to stay. I think that's just starting to apply in the association.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is the foreshore and lake zoning bylaw update from Ms. McKay.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Good morning. Just a little background for you. The four attached bylaws were considered by council and a public hearing was held on September 17th, 2017. And those bylaws included amendment to the foreshore and lake zoning bylaw, an amendment to the official committee plan to incorporate a foreshore and lake development permit area, an amendment to the land use procedures bylaw for implementation of that foreshore and lake development permit area, an amendment to the municipal ticketing information system bylaw for implementation. Only the first two bylaw amendments were actually required to proceed to public hearing. However, staff at the time had included the latter two in the public information package to ensure transparency with respect to the proposed changes to the procedure bylaw and the ticketing bylaw. It was intended that all four bylaws were brought forward for council's consideration after the public hearing. However, due to a number of contributing factors, including the loss of the Director of Planning and Development, these bylaws had not yet been considered for adoption. So a little quick overview here for you with respect to the foreshore and lake zoning bylaw. In 2017, after five years of experience with the foreshore and lake zoning bylaw, staff determined it was time to update the bylaw. Council had approved the bylaw in 2012, following public stakeholder recommendations the previous year for the Lake Recreational and Commercial Use Task Force. Bylaw objectives at the time included sustaining Assouis Lake for the health of local fisheries, safe and orderly recreation and commercial use, and the continued attractiveness of Assouis as a resort community. The foreshore and lake zoning bylaw applies from the upland high-water mark across the foreshore and out to the municipal lake boundary in Assouis Lake, which is typically about 100 meters from shore, within which four zones are demarcated. That is the W1, which is predominantly used for the public water use, and that includes our swimming areas. W2, which is a private mortgage, which is usual for the waterfront single-family homes. W3, a zone which is group and/or strata mortgage. And W4, which is for commercial mortgage and commercial uses. Now, each zone has its own development standards, and a zone amendment in a public hearing is required to accommodate different uses not permitted under that zone. So an example of that zone amendment would be the one that we recently did for the foreshore and lake zoning bylaw amendment to amend the zone to accommodate the floating water park in the W1 zone at Gyro Park. So with respect to the foreshore and lake development permit area, the pending attachments included a proposal to add a foreshore and lake development permit area into the OCP to promote environmentally sensitive design of private mortgage facilities and to complement our foreshore and lake zoning bylaw. As explained below, these new permits will also compensate for diminishing provincial regulatory role for private mortgages. The Ministry of Forest Lands and Natural Resources Operations has very different approaches for dealing with it distinguishes as special permission and general permission application for mortgage facilities. The ministry directly reviews all specific permission applications for larger mortgages such as group, strata, and commercial mortgages, and also refers them to local governments' full review and compliance with municipal requirements. Control of private mortgages is another matter, however. In those cases, the ministry automatically grants a general permission if the property owners conform to basic blanket conditions, which is on their own self-recognition, which means that the province and by extension, local governments are often unaware of what private mortgages are being built. In the view of many affected local governments, this regulatory shortfall has worsened with the ministry's announcement on January 17th, 2017, that general permission exclusions were being broadened with only a few area exceptions. To enable this shift, the ministry moved from their previous surface limit of 24 meters squared for private docks, which is the same as in our bylaw. So as a result of the aforementioned information, staff at the time recommended that staff follow suit with other local governments by requiring development permits for private mortgages and instituting a foreshore and lake development permit area. The guidelines in our attached foreshore and lake development permit area are modeled after those which were applied in the Columbia Shushua Regional District and other communities, which in turn originated from the provincial best practices. So basically, that means that if you're just going to put a dock out in front of your home, as long as you follow provincial best practices, you don't need any approval from the province. So another update is on the Okanagan Large Lakes Foreshore Protocol. The following excerpt is taken from the Province of B.C. Environmental Protection and Sustainability website. Foreshore and repairing areas are important for biodiversity and provide valuable habitat for many species. During the planning and evaluation of works affecting the foreshore, consideration needs to be given to applicable legislation and to ensuring that all works do not impose direct or long-term cumulative impacts to the environmental values at the site. This protocol document applies to all works below the high-water mark on the following large lakes: Mable, Sugar, Okanagan, Kalamalka, Wood, Skah, and Assouis. It will be used as a guidance for all other lakes in the Okanagan area, the Thompson Okanagan region, which includes Vassal Lake. So the document also was to be utilized by provincial and federal agencies and local governments in planning and decision-making processes. In January of 2018, the Ecosystem Section updated the Okanagan Large Lakes Foreshore Protocol and developed additional accompanying guidance documents. These new documents replace the Okanagan Large Lakes Foreshore Protocol, which was dated May 2009, and include the following: Okanagan Large Lakes Foreshore Protocol, Guidance for Fresh Water Mussels, Guidance for Foreshore Plants, Dock Design Criteria for Large Lakes, Shore-Spanning Coconie, Fresh Water Mussels, and Foreshore Plants. And there's links on that report to all those documents for you. So these recent changes in provincial policy make it ever more important that the town proceeds with the proposed updates to our policies and procedures. Now, with respect to the Land Use Procedures bylaw, two small amendments are required to update our Land Use Procedures bylaw to assist implementation of the foreshore and lake development permits. These are to include them under the Director of Planning and Development Services delegated authority from council for approving development permits and to add them to the development permit application form. It's noted that minor development permit fee in $750 would apply under the Land Use Procedures bylaw as long as construction value doesn't exceed $1 million. Then with respect to municipal ticketing, lastly, amendments would also be required to a municipal ticketing information system bylaw to add off offenses and fines for commencing work without a development permit. Impacts to the community: Consistent, clear, and effective regulations contribute to achieving community foreshore lake objectives and create a level playing field for all users. Organizationally, additional demands on planning and development staff for new development permits are basically unknown at this time, but should be very manageable with our current staff level. With respect to budget, development permit fees will help offset the costs associated with the additional town services. Time and action is needed to cover off regulatory shortfalls for private mortgages. And with respect to sustainability, long-term abandonment and sustainability of Assouis Lake is a primary concern of our community's sustainability plan. The options provided for council at this time are, number one, proceed with the amending bylaw approvals as required inclusive of holding a new public hearing. Two, direct staff to provide additional information. Three, abandon the bylaws. And staff recommend option one, given the changes to large lakes foreshore protocol and respect to the time that's lapsed since the proposed amending bylaws were reviewed, we're recommending that you hold a new public hearing prior to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. And as a member of the LRCU before I was even on council, I think that the reason this group came forward was to really have a look at all of the issues that we were dealing with in town. And I think we did a good job of going through everything and making recommendations. At that, certainly I can see that there is a need to update things. One of my concerns is that we have four jurisdictions on this lake. And we've got the Assouis Indian Band, the regional district, the town, and of course, below the border. So it does make it a little confusing. I see that there are docks and structures in the regional district that do not follow what we have recommended and suggested and put in our bylaws. So that being said, I think that it's very important that we move forward on this and that we look at all the issues and make updates where necessary. So I'm in agreement with this. Is there anybody who wants to? Sorry, I spoke before anybody else had a chance. Do you want to? Anybody? Go on.
Director McKay, I think you did a great job of making a recommendation because, of course, from our point of view in our industry, there's been many, many concerns from all sorts of stratas and homeowners that by changing any bylaws or reinforcing what we've already created, there will be complications. So I think the public hearing is necessary, and I certainly would be in favor of that.
Anybody else? So did you need, do we need to make a, just go ahead and just leave it? And we will let you move forward and come up with a public hearing on this issue?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, CJ.
I'm just curious about the timeline for the hearing.
I turn towards other staff members to say, "Well, let's do it this way. Let's not have it the same as we have the cannabis one."
That's a good thought.
So it's a public hearing and not a meeting first, or going right to public hearing?
I don't see a reason we couldn't go directly to public hearing.
There is no real need for a public meeting. It's more the formality of the bylaw process. And in fact, the bylaw process with a public hearing is better off because then you get a formal process for handling any public input.
Sure.
Respectfully, I watched on Granicus the previous public hearing, and the concerns raised were predominantly from one particular strata group, which council is aware of, and a member of that strata is here today. And if you wanted any mention of that prior, or process prior to that, or now, or at the public hearing, you're welcome to. Any way you want to go.
If I can just interject, if I'm not mistaken, you've had extensive discussions with that strata, and for all intents and purposes, those issues have been clarified to them?
That's correct. And I could clarify that for council if you wish. Would that be, would you like to understand?
Sure.
Okay, so the way it works for any strata group, so just so we're fair, it's all the same level playing field, is the strata group would make application to the province for whatever type of foreshore lease requirements they need for their, to accommodate their property owners in the strata, whether it be a marina or such. In the case of the one strata group, they were concerned because they use predominantly boat lifts to accommodate their strata members. And they're certainly welcome to make that application as they see fit to the province. Were the province to then recommend that that be approved, they would refer it to us. If it was noncompliant with our bylaws, council has the option to grant a variance to the bylaw in consideration of an existing condition. But ultimately, it's the provincial jurisdiction to grant approvals over the foreshore. The town's responsibility is to provide bylaws and policies that are in compliance with the foreshore's policies.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you thought was important, Mr. Remenko?
No, I think that clarifies that particular situation.
Okay.
In that particular case that you just updated us on, that's an existing structure already, is it not?
It's an existing situation, but as I understand it, they do require an update to their foreshore lease or new lease, which would, needs to be applied for through the province.
Okay.
Are you aware of that being done, or in the process?
I was told that that would be proceeded with.
It's being worked on, yes.
Okay.
But I think it's, I don't know, can I comment at all?
No. So I think what we'll do is leave it to a public hearing, and obviously, people from the strata would be available to come and speak at that time as well, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't need to deal with that. And our next item?
Didn't know I was getting my lunges.
It's a big one. So you're in the hot seat again, Ms. McKay.
Just gets hotter over here. Good thing I got thick skin. I did just have an email sent to you with a previous report. I don't think it was attached to my report. Only if council requires it. You can have a look at your email. Thank you very again here. So this one has to do with our cannabis retail sales policy. PLA 019. A little bit of background information, council passed a resolution at their July 3rd meeting in support of the sale of recreational cannabis in the town of Assouis. Council also restricted sales to private stores only. Council then passed the following motion at the July 16th committee of the whole meeting: That council directs administration to bring a zoning amendment bylaw for debate and decision that reflects site-specific zoning, limited to C1, C2, and C3 as a method of identifying location for retail cannabis. Then, at the committee whole meeting on July 16th, council passed the following motion: That staff be directed to bring back policy development site selection options for retail cannabis locations. This report and the attached draft policy have been repaired in response to that particular noted motion. So council requested that staff provide additional information in order to determine under what conditions a rezoning proposal might not be considered. These conditions would become the foundation for policy that would guide council and staff when considering a site-specific zoning proposal. With the policy in place, applicant, staff, and council could ensure that all proposals were reviewed by the same set of criteria or conditions. Some of the rezoning conditions council has previously discussed include proximity to schools or other areas attended by children, standalone buildings, exclusion of main street locations, parking, access and egress. And again, that was just an example. Council may also introduce any additional conditions or criteria that they deem important to identify. The following sections of this report provide for an overview or recap of the rezoning conditions previously discussed with council. These conditions are included in the attached draft policy. Store location discussion. Council received a report at the July 16th committee of the whole meeting with several maps of downtown Assouis. The maps identified the relationship between the commercial zones and the neighboring properties. Following section provides a summary of the information provided in the July 16th report. So this is just a little recap. So with respect to the C1 zone and proximity to the elementary school, we provided a map showing 100-meter buffer around the elementary school that indicated that two of the C1 properties would be excluded from applying to the rezone. So the reason that I provided that was just to identify that, you know, if you went C1 and then you added in the elementary school distancing, that really only excludes two of the C1 properties. Then we showed a map of the 150 meters. That's on that report that was emailed to you from Amy just now.
I can't, yeah, I can't get it onto...
Oh, you weren't, okay, sorry. Thank you, Jeanette. Sorry. Tell me now. Map, and then this map showing this 150-meter buffer around the elementary school indicated that the C1 zone properties would be excluded from applying, which basically included the Subway Plaza. And then when we added the 200-meter buffer, it included the AG Foods and the provincial liquor store. So, you know, going down that route really didn't make much sense once we looked at those maps and we had that conversation. So then we also had a general statement about proximity, schools, daycares, and places where children meet has been included in the draft policy as a result of that exercise. Then with respect to the downtown commercial C1 zone, in particular Main Street, the official committee plan identifies the downtown as a traditional Main Street. Assouis has fortunately retained its traditional downtown Main Street, which is a major attraction for residents and tourists alike. Supporter policies are included in the current OCP to ensure that the downtown continues to be the central focus of our community. The OCP's policies include seeking to promote a dynamic mix of complementary downtown uses. Some may argue that the sale of cannabis is not necessarily a complementary use, while others will argue it's simply another retail outlet. Council may wish to consider restricting the sale of cannabis to stores that do not fund directly onto Main Street, for example, from Heron Place to Park Place. If this option is chosen... If this option is chosen, staff's preference would be to include this in the zoning amendment that is, so it provides a clear direction to staff and council, would also provide clarity to the established businesses on Main Street. Alternatively, council could recommend the attached draft policy be amended to include a statement about special consideration for Main Street. With respect to the C2 or the shopping center commercial and proximity to residential uses, the town of Suez has several parcels zoned C2, shopping center commercial. This zone allows for a variety of retail stores includes professional medical and service businesses. Examples within the community that are zoned C2 are the Gateway Shopping Center, where bylaw is, the Lakeview Plaza, where Red Apple is, and as indicated in the maps from the report in the July 16 agenda, all of C2 zoned areas are within a short distance of residential properties. Proximity to residential properties should be considered during the rezoning process, and that's been included in the policy. With respect to the C3 zone of the highway commercial, that extends from one end of our community to another. The zone encompasses the intersection of Highway 3 and Highway 97, several properties along Highway 97 to the south, and several properties along Highway 3 corridor from the boat trailer parking area to Rattlesnake Canyon amusement park. In general, all of these properties are considered highly visible, and that's really a benefit for retailers. In most cases, these properties also provide for adequate onsite parking. Issues related to parking access and egress are also considered on a site-specific basis during the rezoning process. As discussed at the July 16 committee of the whole meeting, each of the three commercially zoned areas, C1, C2, and C3, are adjacent to uses which could be considered by some residents to be in conflict with the sale of recreational cannabis. Council therefore opted to move forward with site-specific zoning, which would allow each of the proposed to be vetted and reviewed on its own merits. The site-specific rezoning method also complements the process of licensing set out by the liquor and cannabis regulation branch of the provincial government by demonstrating support or non-support for commercial license through the rezoning process. Council was interested in having a further discussion with respect to possible conditions under which a rezoning would be considered. The attached draft policy identifies conditions previously discussed with the implementation of the policy, along with the site-specific zoning requirements, will ensure that individual proposals are reviewed under the same criteria and conditions, making a fair process for all applicants. With respect to implications for the community, sale of recreational cannabis has the potential to impact many members of our community. In order to allow the sale of recreational cannabis in Suez, amendments to the zoning bylaw and other business license bylaws are necessary, or rather, end the business license. Once councils provide direction on the location of cannabis retail sales, next step will be to bring information forward for discussion in regards to the business licensing. So that'll be our next step. No effect to the budget at this time. With respect to significant dates, again, federal government has stated that comes into effect October 17, 2018, but we needn't rush for that date. Sustainable, good planning processes, proactive, help contribute to launch a sustainable of our community. Options for council's consideration. Council resolves to have staff bring forward the attached policy for cannabis sales, site-specific rezoning considerations for adoption. Option two, council provides specific direction to include a statement in the site-specific zoning, that sale of cannabis will not be permitted on properties which front Main Street from Harren Lane to Park Place. Option three, council resolves to provide additional direction to administration to bring forward revised policy, or for council requests additional information. Now, staff are, recommend option one and direction related to option two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting together this policy manual with looking at the, the issues that we've brought up and many of them. So I'm sure everybody has some, some, some thoughts. I'd just like to say one thing first, under the policies that you've got there. That development services staff would be the first contact with developers and that they would advise developers about their proposals before submitting a formal application. And I like those statements, so Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So I remain concerned about the, the approach we're taking here, and it sort of solidifies how I feel when I read the implications and I see under community, the sale of recreational cannabis has the potential to impact many members of our community. I'm not sure we said the same thing when we discussed distilleries opening, or zoning for distilleries, or liquor licenses, or anything like that. And the naivety to think that on October 17, people are going to be able to get cannabis. We live in British Columbia. Access hasn't been an issue for some time, and in a way, it's almost been unofficially decriminalized. So I think in a lot of ways, we're overcomplicating and overthinking something that isn't going to have the impact some expect it to have. I've, since our last meeting, I've spoken to other municipalities and met with one of the larger municipalities around us to understand what approach they were taking. And I don't, and I'm probably wrong, but I don't know that anybody is looking at site-specific zoning right now. My concerns with going that route are not being clear and concise to the direction of, of what we want to do with this particular industry. I'm concerned at the costs in looking at each application specifically and having those discussions and public hearings. But I think this council and this administration can easily put together the framework for this zoning bylaw. We've seen what other communities are doing now, as far as proximity to schools, as far as competition, as far as hours of operation. And a lot of the, the framework I've seen is, is really based on common sense. I would really urge this, this council to reconsider the site-specific zoning and set clear and concise zoning bylaws that allows potential applicants and entrepreneurs to understand clearly what can be done in Suez. And so I would just urge us to reconsider going down this road.
Thank you. Can I just say that I was at the regional district meeting the other day where the cannabis issue came up with all six municipalities were there, plus the eight regional districts. There was quite a long conversation about it. Many of the regional district smaller communities were looking at how they could have somebody like a corner store apply for this. So there's a lot of issues which they haven't dealt with yet, say Tulamin, for example, okay, in, in area G. And so there were lots of things that were brought up, but I did hear from some of the other municipalities, including Penticton. And two things that I wrote down about them is that they have put in, in their bylaw, 300 meters from a school. Now, they're a much bigger area, so they can do that. The other thing that they have put in is that each store would be, must be 750 meters away from another store. So what the mayor said at the meeting was that that would likely limit the amount of stores in the municipality to six or seven. So now, I don't think we're, I don't know whether we've talked about that or not. If we have, if depending on, on what our distance from schools or, or, or children's playgrounds or anything like that is, are we considering allowing 10 to be in town? Or do we wish to put in something that would allow us to, to limit the number of viable stores? I don't know, and I didn't know whether that had come up.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So there's two things here, the first being number of stores, which would, of course, if you proceed down the site-specific zoning, when you get to say, okay, we've got seven now that we, you know, we're moving forward with the process, isn't that enough? So I guess you, when you decide there's enough, there's enough. But the second comment I just have is with, with respect to what other communities are doing, and the majority of planners that I've spoken with around the province, and we've been talking about it for some time, is the majority of them are actually not allowing it at this time. They're, they are not allowing the sale of cannabis in their community at all until they see what happens over the next year or so, or they're only allowing provincial store. So that, of course, limits it to larger communities where the province may have one or two stores, or, you know, maybe, or maybe not, they would want to come to our, our community. But that's been my experience. And if you, if you go back and look at what Penticton's doing, if we implement that, then that means there's pretty much nobody in the C1. 750 meters, well, basically, you're, you're out of the community.
Well, I did talk to the planning director up there, Brad, and I said, you know, Suez is, we're a kind of an interesting shaped community, and we have several, you know, the lake and, and things around us. So it's difficult when it comes to, to zoning, but definitely, we could not deal with the 300 meters, I don't think. We wouldn't have allowed anything. So I said, we were looking at other options, just so that they would know.
Counselor Rhodes had a comment first.
Sorry, Counselor Rhodes, and then Mr. Remanko. Sorry, CJ. You're not loud enough. You need to yell or wave in my face or something.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Bring a sawed-off hockey stick. The uniqueness of our community sometimes allows us to move forward with a lot of projects that are not acceptable to other communities in the province. I'm quite proud of the fact that we are being proactive and moving forward when many other communities have chosen to sit back and wait. You know, we're leading the charge down the road, and we're still the only municipality in British Columbia that has restricted the government store thing. And once again, I'm proud of that decision and how we're moving forward with it. My resolve to stick with the site-specific zoning option that we have in front of us is even stronger than it was last time. I see so many benefits from doing it that way, and a lot of the negative aspects of, of allowing that kind of thing will be covered in our policies that will be the lead-in for every applicant, so we'll be have, we'll have very specific things that says if you're not ready to comply to it, then let's not go any further with it. I'm just wondering, I don't even know how to begin this, but I, I'm having some second thoughts about our Main Street restriction. And when you have a, a positive outlook towards a business like retailing cannabis products, which of course is the subject of what we're talking about, you can see how legitimate and how beneficial these businesses can be in our community. I know there's a thought in everybody's, in the back of everybody's mind that there's automatically going to be 40 applicants and every other store in our community will be selling cannabis, but as we move forward with this, a lot of those, you know, opportunists will go by the wayside because of the, the things that we're doing in our, in our community. Is there any benefit to not having that restriction on our Main Street, and is it something that we would consider?
I'll speak to that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Remanko.
Mr. Remanko, go ahead.
Okay, I'll speak to that subject first. What, what is proposed right now does not restrict selling cannabis on Main Street. The director of planning and I have discussed this matter, and we brought it back for kind of reconsideration for council, mainly because we look at the OCP and we take our direction from the OCP. And certainly, council has the ability to judge, there's a lot of area variance that's interpretation in the OCP. I think it was, we agreed that it's important to have that discussion because, as mentioned in the report by the director of planning, some people will say it's part of general retail, and some people will say it isn't part of general retail. And part, so having that consideration, we feel is an important part of legitimizing the OCP, that particular phraseology, that keeping the uniqueness and the character of, of Main Street. We don't know what it's going to do to the Main Street, and they do nothing. But having that discussion, we felt, was really, really important. We don't know if the, the stores will be required to have totally blacked-out windows. I, I don't know. Is that part of the, is that a regulation that we make, or is that?
Thank you, Mr. Remanko. Actually, so far, the policy at the province is you can't display the products in the windows, so, guess you can't hang your buds out there. And you can't have, you can't say, you know, have big signs and, you know, sale on today or things like that. So I think it's a pretty subtle approach is the way it will go. But if I may say that we can also do some restrictions during the business licensing, if there's something in particular that council wants to see or doesn't want to see as part of the licensing process, we can do that as well.
Yeah, so I guess in terms of part of the discussion is that it's not in there right now. We felt it was important enough to bring back if council wanted to discuss it, and if council feels that it's, it, you know, we, it's okay to have it on Main Street. The existing documents that are presented can go, can go forward. So the other, the other points I just wanted to kind of interject in is, is that the number of stores in the community was a part of a previous report, and council did not want to address that issue of limiting the number of businesses. And part of that was, I think was part of the discussion about the whole privatized retail and let the local market dictate the successful businesses. So that, that was a previously discussed, discussed item. In terms of generally, what we're doing right now and what's happening in the province, I guess my observation is that every community is looking at what is in the best interest for their community.
Correct.
That, you know, this, this is one of the few opportunities that the provincial government has given to local government to make their own choices. So yes, it's, it's a, it's a process that is difficult for some communities because they're looking at what everybody else is doing and every, and saying, well, maybe we should do that. But the bottom line is, what is in the best interest of this community? What we were hearing is that, that council wanted to use kind of a slow process and see how it evolved. Based on that, I guess it's a, there's a, there's a key principle in my mind, is it's easier to deregulate than it is to re-regulate. And, and in the case of, of coming with this particular type of approach, if it doesn't work in two years, then council can go to the other process. But if it, if it does work, you can continue. But if you, if you open it up now and, and you decide, oh, it's, it's going in this particular direction, we gotta, we have to stop the train, all of a sudden, you're re-regulating, and what's happening is that you're going to get situations of existing non-conforming. And that is a nightmare for all planners, is my understanding. So coming from this particular perspective, I think, I think that is one of the ways that you can feel comfortable about what, what your process is. Thank you.
One of the things that we had talked about, and I don't see it mentioned in here, was a standalone store or facility. So that automatically cuts down on some particular areas, doesn't it? And I don't know whether that's still being considered, or if that's necessary, or was that a government, a provincial?
No, but what would happen is that during the rezoning process, council would take that into consideration.
Okay. Okay, Counselor King.
Thank you, Mayor. I do support the site-specific, like Counselor Rhodes said. I look at that as being leaders in the province making a real decision. I do not support Counselor Rhodes' idea of putting it back on Main Street. I would definitely vote against that. I'd like a little more discussion around, I know 750 meters wouldn't be realistic in a small town, but would it make sense to have, whether it's 100 meters, 50 meters, or do you just have a whole row of 10 in a row on one street? Like, all food places are on every corner. They, they found out that's better for business to have them close to each other. And I don't think it's our... And I don't think it's our job to dictate how many stores are in town. It's free enterprise, and that would be related to going through the process. So that's some of my comments. But I'd like a little more discussion on the part about being a part of each other.
I'm gonna let Counselor Rhodes go back, because he wasn't finished, I don't think. I'm sorry.
We received some sage advice from our CAO that clarified a couple of things. I'd like to just instill the thought, and I'd like everybody to know that I like pizza. It's not in the Canada Food Guide as a recommended thing to eat all the time. But I would never, ever stand in the way of another pizza place coming to our community, and where it was located, as long as the zoning was appropriate, and the business was a legitimate business. I can see cannabis retail outlets being very, very beneficial to our, our business community. I can see them being proactive and active in all things in our community, and I would never want to restrict somebody from doing that, either volume-wise, or in a legitimate, predetermined location in our community.
So the Penticton thing of 750 meters from another would not fly here? Okay. Just, I just thought I'd bring it up. Counselor Youngberg, did you?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I'm really supportive of site-specific, of course, and having spoke to two or three people that have called on my locations that I have for rent, they are just anxious and waiting for the guidelines of the site-specific outline that we're gonna create for them. And they've just said they have no problem at all with living within those guidelines that we create. It's, the comments were very, very concise, saying, "All we need to know is what do you want, and how do you want us to operate?" That's really all that they have said to me. So just thought I'd throw that in, and hopefully, we will be able to proceed. And the draft that you've done is, is pretty specific to what we're, what direction we should take.
Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I, I completely understand what Counselor Youngberg just said, in terms of the people that are showing interest are looking specifically to know whether they can or can't open, and what that zoning looks like. And I think what, what we're doing is the opposite. But back to the, the, the community situation of, the sticking point for me, that the sale of recreational cannabis has the potential to impact many members of our community. And I'm struggling with that, because I'm trying to understand why it's any different than a pharmacy, a winery, a distillery, or a liquor store. And it concerns the academia that we're making our decisions based on, on this mentality that this, 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 I guess, legalization of cannabis is gonna have this massive societal effect on Assoius or British Columbia. I, I can't seem to wrap my head around that. As I've said, access to cannabis is, you know, has, has not been an issue for people looking to use it. As far as our downtown core, I mean, I, I look to Vancouver and areas of Vancouver that have had storefronts on, on Main Streets, and I haven't seen any of them turn into the red light district. So I, I'm looking at a lot of these concerns, and I'm really trying to wrap my head around why we're taking an industry and treating it with kid gloves, and, and overly concerned about ramifications, when the reason that this, this product has been decriminalized and legalized, and it's taken as long as it has, is the, the shift in thinking. And I go back to our, our conversations and hearings we had, I guess it was well over a year ago now, when we talked about cannabis zoning well ahead of this, this, this law coming down. And I've also, and I, I remember global news coming down and talking to residents in our community. Since that time, we've had several discussions here. Local media, and even national media has reported on that. What I have not seen is a significant pushback from our community, that we need to take all these additional steps and be overly cautious of, of this new product becoming legal. It seems to be, from what I feel, an issue at this table, and less about what our community is concerned about. And I still feel that it's our responsibility as a council to create zoning bylaws that allow public and potential businesses coming to our town to know and understand what they can and can't do, and that we're open for business. And the first complaint I, I ever heard when I moved to this town, before I got on council and even after the fact, was that we weren't a business-friendly community, and we didn't appear to be open for business. This is an example of that to me. Penticton did go and do the work. They used, they went through a different process than we did, but they went out and did the work. They got the answers they were looking for. The answers were quite predictable, for what I would have thought, and, and they're moving forward. I don't know why we're so reluctant to make decisions on proximity, on zoning, and, and be done with it, and allow the free market to do what it does like any other industry. So I'm quite frustrated that we are looking to go to the site-specific zoning. I think it's costly. I think it's time-consuming, and I think it, it leaves the perception that, that Assoius is not business-friendly in regards to cannabis.
And I'm going to disagree with you, because I think we have done a really good job of being much more open for business than we have in the past. And I think this is one example of, we're trying to make sure that we are open for business in a positive way. And I'm just wondering, I think you were, you were thinking that what you read was that this was a negative thing that we were working with? Perhaps the whole idea of having it and come into our community is positive, because I think there are many people who do feel that it's, that it's positive. But I do think we need to make sure that what we're doing fits everything, so that we are not backtracking, like some of the communities have up the valley, and saying, "Oh dear, we made a mistake there, we're gonna, we're gonna close it down." And so I think that all these conversations, and everybody's point of view, has to be a positive. And I appreciate that everybody is, is putting this forth, and I, I hope it makes our planning director's job easier. It may make it more complicated.
Well, I think that was my concern, though, is why we put a public document out there talking about the potential impact to members of our community. I'm not sure I understand what those impacts are.
Maybe it was a positive impact, maybe not negative.
Thank you. Actually, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mayor McCordough, because the statement is just that it has a potential to impact our community. I didn't say negatively. The, the point is, it's important to the community, and I think it's important to members of the community, both from, from different perspectives. So impact to community, it's not necessarily a negative impact.
Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Just a question about process. So at the end of the day, we will have, you know, a bylaw in place that's gonna cover everything, and we will also have that policy document, you know, as a lead-in. If you're an applicant, and you have a location, and it seems like everything is going, but one of those policies might get in the way, is there a process to negotiate that, or?
Thank, thank you. That's a very good question. So what would happen following today's meeting is we then bring forward the, the bylaw for first and second reading, a sitting in a public hearing, within which we would, the, the bylaw is an amendment to the zoning bylaw that has a statement similar to what you did with respect to the going of medical cannabis, where it would be considered on a site-specific basis in these zones, and that reference to the, reference to, to policy. So then, when someone comes to meet with us, we would say, "Oh, that site looks good. Take into consideration all of these different policy conditions that council's been discussing. Oh, I see, for example, oh, maybe you don't have enough parking. Well, let's, let's see what council thinks about it." That's basically the way it would go. So it's not like they would have to meet all of those different line items on the policy. But it would be, it would be make sure that council is reviewing each application on those same set of, set of criteria.
Anybody else? Just a minute. Counselor Campbell, I'm just wanting to make sure everybody got.
You're thinking there already?
Yeah, well, you know what? I mean, you have spoken a couple times, and I appreciate it. But I just, I just wanna make sure everybody has equal chats. Counselor King first, did you have something? And then Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, I'm just gonna throw a wrinkle into this. This talks about retail sales. What impact that this policy goes through on the manufacture of marijuana?
None.
Two completely different things.
So you'll be bringing back something to do with manufacture of marijuana?
May I, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
We already have a line item in our zoning law that states that if you wanna sell, I'm sorry, if you want to grow cannabis, you need to apply for site-specific zoning. And that, in that case, you can only apply for site-specific zoning in the industrial zones.
Okay, thank you. Clarify that.
Okay, yeah. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. Do we know of many other cities or municipalities that are going this route?
No, as I pointed out, majority of them are disallowing it altogether at this time.
Majority are disallowed?
Not allowing it. Most are not allowing the sale of cannabis in their community at this time. They are, so I think we're kind of being a little bit more proactive in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
So can, can you fill us in on what happens next, or how do we proceed from here? Is that what you were gonna say?
I can do that, but I wanted to make another comment. Even about the Penticton's methodology, they did not allow it between their 100 and their 300 block on their Main Street.
Yes, that's right.
No, I don't know what's in Penticton between the 100 block and the 300 block, but there must have been something that would, would bring to their attention that they don't want that, the nature of that particular retail.
I think it's parks, and they've redone that whole downtown area, and they use it for concerts, and, yeah.
Yeah, so again, but there is some restrictions. And, and quite frankly, I wouldn't want our planning department to have to take out the tape measure every time somebody wants to come and open up a retail business in, in the community.
That's right.
Okay, speaking to the process here, if council is, is, is accepting and doesn't wanna see any changes in the policy and in, in the bylaw, all we need is, is a resolution to bring this, these documents forward to the next, to the next council meeting, and we'll, we'll initiate the, the processes.
So can I speak to timing, then? If you're okay with that?
You're looking at number 3.4.
Yeah, if you were to go in that direction, we could bring them forward on the 4th.
Yes.
And then I would, I would like to look for, I can't believe this, bring close to the, close to the bone, or close to the election, but I'm thinking first meeting in October for our public hearing.
Do we have another, a public hearing that day? I thought we did. No?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Not yet.
You know what? I don't like to, to, to think that we need to put things off because of the election. I think there, there are things that we need to deal with on a daily basis, and I don't, I don't think we need to, people know where we stand on this, because they can watch this on Granicus. So to me, go ahead when it's convenient, I think. Counselor Rhodes.
So I'll make that resolution to move it forward. Do you want the specific comment in there that as is, or the way it is?
There's, there's option one, and then we request a direction on option two.
Okay, I'll move option one, then.
I'll second. Okay. So will we vote on that first? Option one, all in favor. Against? Okay. Counselor Campbell is against. Now, option two, you want some direction, and is there anything in the policy that you would, that anybody would like to see changed a little bit, or brought forward? Counselor King.
I guess it relates, it's not really specific on the rezoning considerations. I don't know if that comes up at the open house when it talks about schools. I mean, does that become the decision of the staff, whether it's 100 meters or 200 meters? There's nothing more, like, you need a little more specific. It's pretty great.
So, so that is the site-specific zoning. So during the site-specific rezoning proposal, that's when you'd have that conversation. The maps that are provided for you indicated that if you were to go to something like 300 meters, you would literally be eliminating almost all of the downtown. So if, if you go to 100 meters, there's only two properties on C1 that would be excluded. So that's one of the reasons that we will move to that site-specific. But then the policy says that council will give consideration to the location that's being selected in respect of any neighboring uses, including, of course, the location of schools. The draft bylaw that I've already prepared has a notation that can, can either go in or go out with respect to the Main Street from, from Heron to Park Place, and that's the only specific in the draft bylaw.
Okay. I'll make a motion on number two.
That, that we?
Council provides specific direction to staff, including a statement in the site-specific zoning, that sale of cannabis will not be permitted on properties which front Main Street from Heron Lane to Park Place.
You'd like to leave that in there?
Yes.
That's already in there right now.
I'm sorry, if, it's, it would be put into the bylaw to bring it forward.
Okay, so be specific.
Or it can go in the policy that's attached. You want it in the bylaw? If it's in the bylaw, it's really clear. It says, "Don't bother bringing forward a rezoning application for Main Street," if we put it in the bylaw. Or if we put it in the policy, it's just something that council considers along.
With the site-specific.
Right, so it's already in here.
So it is in there, so we can have it the way it is.
You can leave it this way, or you could also have it in the bylaw.
So, council, would you prefer to leave it the way it is, or put it in?
I'd like to put it right in the policy. That makes it black and white.
It is in the policy.
No, I'm sorry.
It's in the bylaw that you want.
You're in the bylaw? Okay.
So you're, you're, you would like to see that? Is there anyone else who'd like to support that?
No, I'd like to see it kept in the policy. I, I'd like to see it in the policy, because measuring and walking around that 100-meter area, there is two properties that, that would not be serious to the elementary school. And you could be looking at that as a possible location. If it stays in policy, if it's in the bylaw.
It has to be.
It has to be.
Got it, right. Okay, Counselor Rhodes.
So for clarity, to do nothing remains, it will remain in the policy.
That's correct.
So we don't need a resolution to say that we're going to do it?
No.
Just leave it the way it is.
You only need a resolution if you want us to add it to the bylaw, not the policy.
So it is possible for, for myself to step forward and have it removed from the policy by resolution, correct?
Yes, or, yes, you could. Ms. Van Vienna.
You, you do have a resolution on the floor that hasn't been seconded yet, that should probably be dealt with before you have further discussion.
Okay. So Jim moved that it should go into the, into the bylaw. Is there anyone wanting to second it?
It's not in the policy.
Well, I, I will second it, so that we can, we can deal with it. So now, are we going to vote on that particular?
You can vote on it.
Yeah. Do you wanna speak to it first?
Yes, thank you. So I'm speaking, have to be careful, I think I'm speaking against it. I'm, I'm a little confused.
I think you understand.
You just wanted to, the, the resolution is to take it from policy to bylaw, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. So because I have strong views on, on not restricting so much where these businesses go, and my belief is, is that we could have these viable businesses on Main Street, because they will become very legitimate, perhaps leaders in our business community. And I would like to see an opportunity to have them in some of the locations on Main Street. In my mind, I don't see any reason for not doing it. I don't view these as being, these businesses as being criminal. I don't see them as being, looking bad, or acting bad in our business community. And I think at the end of the day, because of the way that we're moving, they might be very beneficial on our Main Street. And so that's me speaking against the motion, but actually, two of them, because I would not want it in the policy or in bylaws. I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna work.
Could you?
I'll, I'll clarify that. So if, if that is something that you don't wanna see in the policy at all, once you deal with this motion, then, then you can bring back another motion to remove it out of the policy.
Okay. So we have it moved and seconded, that we move 3.4 into the bylaw. All in favor. Against. Okay, so that, that is defeated. Now, Counselor Rhodes, would you like to? Now, Counselor Rhodes, would you like to?
Thank you again. I'd like to offer a, opt to do some, to have it removed from policy.
Yep.
Yeah. I know it's a little bit more.
Section 3.4, right?
Yes.
To remove section 3.4 out of the policy.
Okay. Is there somebody who'd like to second that?
Who's?
All seconded. So we have section 3.4 being recommended that we remove it from the policy. All in favor. Against. Okay, so that passed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then what will happen next is I'll bring forward the proposed bylaw amendment and in the same report, the amended policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Are we?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's, I, I know that. You know, I have to tell you that the regional district, this, one very small part of this was discussed for over an hour. We never got to number two and number three on the agenda because there wasn't time.
Right.
So I think everybody is dealing with these in slightly different ways and we appreciate the fact that you've gone to a great deal of, of time on this and putting this forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Mayor Council as well too because I've got a few phone calls from others planners saying they're very impressed that the direction that council's choosing to go.
Oh, there you go.
That's great.
Okay, so I believe that we are finished this meeting. So we would, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Counselor Youngberg, Counselor King, all in favor. Thank you very much. So we'll take five minutes before our in-camera meeting.